We're ready to go. All right, the question to order, please run me the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda would be to approve the minutes.
All will approve.
We have motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bills? Anybody have any questions on these bills?
I've got one there. We're now under one motion on it.
Okay.
All move to please, bills. Second there.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the bills as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Financial reports. Financial reports in your packets. Anything that looked out of the ordinary, can you? And then you want to point out?
No, we just have to do transfers.
I'll move to approve financial report.
A motion, do we have a second? Motion and second to go ahead and approve the financial reports. Probably should have done this for the bills, has a roll call.
Gessner?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Pritt?
Aye. Do you want to go back for the bills and do a roll call?
Yeah, we published.
All right. We had a motion on the table to approve the bills as submitted. One second. Proceed with roll call vote.
Otis?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Aye. Bills are paid, finances are approved, treasurer's checks.
Who's bill approved?
Second. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the treasurer's checks. Roll call please.
Gessner?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Pritt?
Aye. Treasurer's checks are approved. Approve of the agenda. Anything to add on the agenda for today? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Sarah, welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, just wanted to let you guys know we're starting up. Planning the Lake Region Extension roundup, give you the dates for that. That will be held January 3rd through the 4th at the Memorial Building. And some of the, some of our breakout rooms will happen at the courthouse as well. So we've got all those bills, all those meetings reserved. The, we have the Junior Crop Scout Field Day at Lincoln Research Center on August 7th. Youth were invited to see several specialty crops, identify insect and weeds. And Lindsay is conducting soil sampling for weedage to determine hotspots for next year. Now that school started, we're starting to get invited into the schools again. So we'll be starting with the 21st century at CMS. We've got an agreement there. We do a lot of programming over there. So we'll be working with those kids with a lot of our extension programs. We're getting a lot of calls on food preservation. A lot of people are getting back and preserving their food. So it's a very scientific process. So we're glad that we have a lot of materials to give them. In the 4H world, we just wanted to have you state the date for our really good fundraiser for our kids. It's our pancake breakfast, October 1st. And that'll be the start of 4H week. So we'll be bringing the kids to one of the mission meetings so they can let you know what they've been up to. September 1st is the start of the 4H year. Got a lot of calls coming in about youth joining 4H. So this is the time to start. We did have a family fund date on August 13th where we gave out awards from the past. Even had a really good turnout there. The one thing that we do have is a memorandum of understanding between Ramsey County Extension, or Ramsey County and Mizzou Extension related to 4H youth development programming. And I have been in contact with Commissioner Gessner about the memorandum of understanding. And I'm hoping that today we could just get a signature. Commissioner Gessner's had a chance to read it through. If anybody else wants to have a copy, I will just pass these on.
Forward with to all in ahead and look at it, make sure there's something new or anything.
It's nothing new. We have had one signed before. They've updated just some terminology.
Yeah, it's pretty boilerplate. And Cindy Olson is the Ramsey County employee that works with extensions. So I didn't see anything of concern in there when I reviewed it.
Sarah, when was the last time this was done?
We decided it was six years ago.
I was going to say, because you mentioned six years and I don't recall.
Yeah.
So.
That was back kind of when we first, they first started to have like a 4H program assistant. And Cindy was our first one with extension. And now that they're seeing all the great benefits that can happen. There are six more within extension that they've added. So they're kind of wanting to, they kind of took our memorandum of understanding and they're placing it around the state with those program assistants. So just kind of having something in place for our working agreement, I guess. And Lindsay and I do, I mean, we all do, we all have 4H duties within the office. It's just Cindy's the county employee.
But a motion to go ahead and approve, sign it on?
Yes, we will approve the memorandum of understanding. Also, there's extension.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve and sign the memorandum of understanding with Ramsey County on their extension 4H youth development program. Further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Sarah?
Yeah, that's all I have.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Sarah?
Well, I listed, Rob is the third and the fourth?
Yes, yes, third and fourth.
And 4H week, does that start October 1st or is it the week prior?
Oh, it starts, it starts October 1st.
Okay.
And then we will be, Cindy contacted you about signing a proclamation. We'll be bringing some kids in like that week before.
Maybe we should do that the second meeting in September. We'll sign the proclamation that, designating that 4H week.
Yeah.
And we'll get that signed. And then whenever the kids want to come in at halftime, just let us know and we'll be sure that we can get a picture taken.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. I was enjoying that.
Wonderful. We look forward to it. October 1st pancakes?
Yep.
Fantastic.
Good fundraising there, especially to get the kids out in the community there, sure.
It is. Thank you so much, Sarah. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda would be the Water Resource District. I don't know if you want to see if they're available.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brian.
It's not raining, so we're expecting to hear some water issues coming in. Actually starting to pick up a lot of what's going on. Getting tentative, a bid set for Edmore for the Ramsey County Ken Project. They're expecting probably about the 30th of October, I think is what we're looking at. We've got Cavaliers guys, they have to find the lines out. We're planning to have the official meeting that we need to have up in Edmore. Hopefully that, about the 19th or 20th is roughly what we're looking at right now. And after that, the ballots will go out and the phones will start to go with everybody having questions. We should be in a little better shape this time. The lawyer we're working with is going to try to solve some of the issues that arose out of the last night. So there'll be more information going out to landlords and they'll have a little better idea what's going on. And that's pretty much where we're at with that. It's still kind of a waiting game, but it's proceeding slowly. Now, we're dealing with a lot of the culvert issues kind of up in the Edmore area. I think Bill's probably been hearing from landlords there. We seem to have a lot of the problems on the Edmore Cooley area and the several laterals going into it where they were kind of designed as overflows. The water comes up and it just goes over the road at that point. But the townships are having their issue with continually repairing the roads. So we're having our engineer looking into our big one, which is that Schleifhorn Crossing that's been at Kedmouth Thorne and Kevin's side ever since it was put in, I think. If we can get any ideas there, then maybe we can apply that to some of these other crossings. We're having a stream crossing down on one of the ones for venture where I think there's four culverts in it now. And they've brought in pictures as they're all closed in and everything. We're going to see what culvert sizing differences there, if anything can be done. Won't be going too far left until we get a little bit back to that. The Schleifhorn areas, just see if there's something that could be applied to at all. No, you've been hearing about it, probably I think Pritji said that he's talked to you about it. Make sure you were aware of it.
Those are two of the water sheds?
It's all Edmore, but it's, one of them is a lateral that goes into the Edmore, so it's not the main channel. So, but it's all kind of, you know, the roads go down into a deep swell. You can put in deep culverts and build the road up. Or you can, I think what's been tried is put in shallow culverts and have the road go over. That area is kind of unique because there isn't very many roads. So if your one road goes under, you may not have access from any other area. Whatever reason, they didn't choose to build very many through that country. So that's kind of what we've been dealing with through a lot of phone calls and stuff. Trying to get all the information in place so we can make some better recommendations of that to you guys. The other thing is going forward, you know, in the past, we've had a lot of requests for culverts to be upsized. That kind of ties into what we're working with here that, that comes back to our board that Kevin and Pritji went to upsize culverts. He wants a stream crossing with that, which comes into hiring an engineer and spending money. So we've kind of made the formal decision today that all the township roads that request to come in, which we've got some of the county ones also, the board will be paying for the stream crossings that need to be done. If it's private guys coming in and just wanting to upsize a culvert through the road for their own good, we'll still help out with that. We'll do the street crossings, but unless there's compelling reasons, the cost for that will stay with the landlord requesting it. So that's a little bit of a change from what's gone in the past. There hasn't been many street crossings done before, but you know, with the way everything's going, that's the key coming in here at least.
City water required, pardon me, city center water required?
Yep. Was there, did any, anything come up for, to be brought to you guys that comes back to us?
I've just been reminding people and I'll continue to do it, you know, as we get through the fall season. And you know, and prior to this morning, it was a little dry out there, so the culverts were being exposed. Just to make sure that they're clear of debris and if they're rusted out or have problems with them, to get those reported. So we can get those taken care of before winter hits and then it becomes too late. And once, once the snow covers them up and then we can't see them, then spring comes and before you know it, they're not working or not working properly and end up washing the road up. So if we could get people to take a look at those, you know, as they have some, either some downtime or if it dries out again and the culverts are cleared, making sure that the debris is cleared out of them and that they're not crushed on one side or the other and that they're not rusted out in the middle. So it'll always be a good thing.
So what is the timeframe of the county for stuff that's going to be done? Is the box culvert to replace the bridge, will that be done yet this year?
预计是 October 28th.
Okay.
So their box culvert delivery date, I think is the second week in October. But they're actually starting to work the first week in October.
Okay, so that's, that won't be any of your guys who have, that'll be all hired. What is the FEMA, was money or bidding for, to be released for the one north of that culvert that washed out the road?
It's VR, not really to be known, but yeah, they probably did release that money. So now there's a bunch of groups, we have to jump through them right now. We're hiring an engineer to do the work, to handle the design.
So how will that work? You, I'll find and get out this year to the engineer, they'll get back hopefully in the winter time or spring time to those? Or does it go faster than that?
Hopefully this fall because they need to do survey work. We're hoping they can get the survey work done before.
And then once you get the recommendation back, is that stuff big enough and you can put that into the budget? So it's over another year or?
It's most culverts in the budget already. I mean, we, it's an 80-20 split, the feds are paying 80, we're paying 20. We thought it was going to be last year, so it's in the budget.
Hopefully that one isn't too far out then with.
It'll be spring. I mean, even design work, then I'll have to go to the, it's what contractor gets it. So I mean, it's, it won't be till spring.
They need to get ball.
Depending on how much work there is in the countryside though.
The DOT has been taking close to two months to contract stuff right now with their staffing workload, so.
If that's the case, that means they can't even go and do their survey work.
They can do the total survey and actually, also I'm sure they do, as far as the environmental impacts and if they require any cultural investigation, which they shouldn't since it's still in the right way. But they have, some networked. So I might believe it, we'll probably get to straighten them.
Nothing we could, but. That's what we were explaining, that.
We'll deal with the feds on this one, so.
People don't understand how that all works. They see you working on one spot and say, oh, this one was more important. Like if you take the money that you have earmarked for that spot and fix this over here. And we've been trying to explain how that doesn't work, just so that's simply. But you know, that was one of the reasons why we went ahead with our stream crossing to the one earlier that we worked on, is at least it'll give them a road. If that highway washes out down that one road, we'll take them around it for the spring. If we can get that one back to them and fix this fall. As far as the more local problems, we seem to have a water issue in our office or Jeff's office this morning, so.
Yeah, anytime we get a driving wind from the west, but normally it doesn't have a problem.
Okay. There must be a crack or something there, the water can run down when it finds the right spot, I guess. So if the board wants to consider that as a problem, they can sure look into it.
Brian, have you or Kevin been in contact with Nelson County on that Bartlett Township over there on that Dykoff Slough right to the west of there? They're looking at enhancing or getting a bigger culvert right west of that wildlife?
I did talk to Cody Johnson who over there. Right now, they're, they've been trying to scrape up funds kind of as a local, you know, guys affected by it. They've done some extra cleaning over there. They did bring up that they want to resize some culverts possibly. Brought up the question of payment, to know how they expect to get this done. And as of right now, their plan is just to try to scrape together funds personally as much as they can to do anything until the assessment that's currently in place is finished up. But then.
Because that was above and beyond that Clara Bartlett Snake and Clear project, correct?
Right, that was only done, specified amount for cleaning out. So it wasn't really anything for fixing infrastructure like that. So it comes back to, at this point, it comes back to township pretty much. How many were sizes pertaining to you guys? So kind of another waiting game. We're trying to do as much as they can to make it work. There's more work now they've got stuff cleaned out where they can see what's going on. They'd like to do more and make everything work better, you know, as it was originally put in there and used to work. But until they kind of get out from under this first one, then they can see do the next step if they can get the support for it, so.
Well, we've heard a lot of good things that came about that, from that project. So make sure that we want to continue on with, on with that and.
But you know, I asked him about going further and doing, you know, bigger assessments or something. He said he fits the sport is there. So kind of what we'd like to get is this Edmore one out of the way and see if we can get that passed. And if the landlords are supporting the projects like that before we move on to anything else. I think it would be a good place for the county to look at participating with something that we could, you know, if we can put together a project and get some state funding for it, you know, if we can increase the size of that channel and the culverts to it. Make it so any water coming from the north doesn't affect the local guys, just takes it straight to the lake. That would give us that fresh water hitting the west side or the east side of the lake. You know, maybe that would help with the pumping issues that you run into water quality. A lot of the state and that water command to go through, you know, how many dozens of Kevin's culverts that are causing trouble going all the way over to the west side, having to come in and then getting that water out of that east part of the county quicker. You know, as excess, excess water comes down, that overflow off the Edmore hits that lot basin and all the water that's in that lot area to start with. If that had its own channel, like working like it should, that would solve a lot of our long running issues. But that would be something more for future discussions is, you know, that assessment that's there is off and younger guys keep coming in and asking why we can't fix problems that have been there ever since they were able to remember. I don't know, Jeff being involved with the commission, I don't know if you keep an eye on what projects are available for funding that if there's anything that would fit, tie into that would be a good place to keep an eye on, I guess is.
I think the starting point on that would be putting together with like a five-year plan. Water commission has a five-year priority plan. And so if it's included in there, they're more willing to cost share on it. But if it's something that's not included in that, they'll have a much more difficult time getting cost share or because it wasn't part of the five-year plan. So keeping those up to date and keeping those current would be a good thing.
Okay. So that's kind of gives a starting point already of what to do to prepare if you want to go forward with that someday.
Is that the one that Hill Street Fests are suing now?
I know, this is slightly to the west or east of there. Comes out just to the east side of the Speedway. So it's, the channel from Highway 2 south is where that Fenster project had went through. But it probably goes by just a couple miles to the east of where that culvert had been at.
To avoid that water quality issue.
Right.
Gotcha.
And probably some of that water would be, you know, the water that flows in the Fenster, if it had a place to go to, it might run down this channel if everything was cleaned out and operating the way it was supposed to. So I guess it gives a, something to look at for the future, you know, that's why we're working on these projects. So it isn't just about getting water off this specific guy's field as quick as possible. It's trying to put together an idea that might help everybody in the long run, so. Okay.
Another one I haven't heard much more about is the one, I know we have a meeting in the basement for the south of US 2 on the county line road. Haven't heard anything more of that either.
I think they did some work over there on the Nelson County side of things. Got some water off in that slough to the east of there. And so I don't know if it's, if they've just taken that down and going south there or if it's went back to the east where there was a possible water outlet for that. So there was a big slough in there that, and it was holding a lot of water right around that curve on that county line road up there. And then right to the east of that, they had some road issues or some water bonding issues and they looked like it was being held back through there, so they're looking at taking that down.
Was there some wildlife easement issues in I A? I know Cody had mentioned that they were, they followed up that the wildlife easements don't, are a lot easier to deal with if they're in the regula, they can't really hold water back there. So they worked with that and they said they've had some great luck with, you know, with a few road issues up that had been issued before and they were able to get the water moving away from the road easements, so.
Anything else, Kevin, Brian?
Well, I think we're in track to keep going with what we're doing. If there's any guidance, anybody from the commission wants to give us, we're always happy to listen to it dealing with these smaller problems.
Well, I think as much maintenance as that Edmore Cooley says to me, you also have to take into consideration where that water ends up. And you're still affecting landowners on the bottom of that basin. And you know, we usually get an earful from them, so there's that concern that.
We did bring that up with the engineer and the lawyer handling our last meeting with Cavalier. As to if, okay, we get this passed, it's kind of, you know, we've got a cost out there as to what's. So how much can we change the work schedule a bit? You know, we've got the guys that are affected, you know, in the past, there'd been a 50, 1450 level that we weren't going to be doing much work under that. And like he's bouncing right around that right now. So the question was raised that, okay, we've got the project approved, it's supposed to cost us much. Well, what if we only clean the real problematic areas? And right now, it's, you know, we're talking quite a few miles of channel, but really there's only probably 10 miles that really have an issue that's causing. So are we allowed to just clean those 10 miles right now or? So are we allowed to just clean those ten miles right now or five miles as needed? And kind of put the rest of the project out of hold or once it's voted in, do we need to go and do the whole thing as we're as it said there?
Yeah.
So that question, you know, we keep bringing it up and we haven't got a solid answer on it yet, but. You know, first thing people heard was, you know, we're going to clean over a hundred miles of ditch. Well, really it's, it's pretty well functioning, you know, there are a few areas that cause a lot of trouble. If we can target those areas and, you know, scrape down and get the silt cleaned out of a few spots. You know, that's, it's going to have a big effect on what Kevin has to deal with every year and what, uh, the local guys that are in those spots are going to have to deal with without changing what's currently coming to the guys on the bottom end. So if we can get an answer to that question, we'll sure be sharing that with everybody too.
Sure.
But, uh, we don't really look at having to clean the whole thing right now and create more issue. It's just, uh, you know, fixing the bottle backs is what we'd like to do.
And the public meetings you said will start in October?
The times that we're put out was, uh, you know, the nineteenth and twentieth is what we were considering right now. So it's not set in stone yet, but that's the schedule we're looking at.
Okay. And then with the board following that?
Right.
Okay. Anything else for us today, Brian?
Well, that should, uh, fill like everything we've got going on.
Anybody have any questions for Brian?
I see Doug, you're American, as Yelich has asked.
That was, uh, you know, the one road that's been washing out and he said, you know, we spend four or five thousand dollars on this every spring here lately, you know, what can we do different to load it? It's got a number of smaller culverts and above it and below it are two six-foot culverts, so we'll look into, you know, changing it to that with that solid problem. We probably need to regraze a little bit right in there. What can we do to fix it instead of keep doing the same thing every year and hoping something else changes? And that comes back to, uh, you know, if we're increasing the size of the culverts and we need, uh, stream crossings, that comes right to us, so that's what we're working with.
Okay. Yeah, Doug was in on talking about that. From that section line there, south of seventeen, um, to the west of his place, right?
Yep. And then, you know, if anybody comes to anybody on the board with that, you know, tell them to come into the board and, well, how do you fill out a water complaint? You know, it's, don't consider it just a complaint, it's our intake form is how we consider it. Once we have that, we can officially start to work on something and see if we can help react, so. I guess I'd give that suggestion to anybody that's contacting you guys, that's the place to start.
Yeah, let's see what his sections nineteen and twenty in township township.
Doug seems to be situated right at the ground zero of the main issues up there, so.
Right. All right. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Roger. Got some, uh.
Some estimates for carpeting. Um, up in Public Health on the west side, then a little bit on the east side. And then down the Old Youth Center, uh, little steps down there coming in from the east. That's looking pretty ratty, so, um, got an estimate from Thompsons for fifty-eight, ten. Lamont's for ninety-nine, fifty-two, sixty-seven. And they should do the same in carpeting because they expect sheets for carpet weight and whatever all else, uh, should be, so.
So the three different ones from Lamont's is separated out and then one, one of them's all together?
Yes.
Gotcha. Looks like a total of six hundred and seventy-two square feet? Is that right?
No, I just said it.
No.
I just look at the money loss.
Oh, that's what I.
Yeah. So.
Does it have to remove a land in place?
Yes. The only place they'd have to remove would be down the stairway down the youth center. I guess I just go with the doubt, but I don't.
Do you have money for that again? Does this come out of yours?
We got money.
I'll move the approval of the for the, the two. The carpeted facility.
So is that Thompson's that he was or?
Yes.
Yep. I'm reading that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how I read it.
Yeah. All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I would say that.
Okay. Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the bid from Thompson's double slide glass and paint for the carpeting and the public health and then the portion of the memorial in the steps. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Roger.
Mr. Fieldson.
Morning.
Morning.
Okay, start off with a little bit of our projects that we got going on right now. Paper patches, nothing's really changed there, we haven't contacted them yet, so. Um, on the graveling. I think we talked about they finished seven earlier and now they have finished Ramsey eight. And they finished Ramsey County Cavalier County Line West to happen. So they're supposed to start on two over by Penn area today, but of course the weather is a bit, so. That's, 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 that's all we have for projects. Any questions?
Paul, you have anything you want to add on that bridge project?
I mean, just to, you got all the updates I guess with the construction. Okay, all done by October.
But Mr. Frigie was asking if there could be some, uh, maybe some asphalt filled temporarily on that bridge. There's some gaps leading up to it.
Oh, I know, on the deck.
On the deck, yep. Um, he said it's really rough taking vehicles over it and, you know, he knows that it's going to be replaced, but in the meantime, if there could be something temporary in there, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, oh.
I see.
It is rough. I agree.
So any questions on our projects? Okay, and then are we need to put the box ad in the paper for mowing road ditches? I think I included a copy of what we've done in the past. So we just need a motion. To put this in the paper.
We have a motion to put the mowing and how the road ditches in the paper. So. Okay. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right. So I guess one thing to add on that, France County four lots culvert, that that door will be closed that whole time.
Yeah.
Just so the public's aware, if you watch under commissioning lately. So about thirty days, but if they start from the first of October, second of October, completion dates twenty eighth, it'll be under thirty days, but.
That's what we need to put in the paper. Good question. Um, I know nothing about harvest land, so. I guess the way Colonel was saying, people aren't running around, they're trying to plug in there. Makes more traffic with humpings, so. At least put it on the website.
Just notice there are closure.
I would, at least so that we can say that we put it out to the public. Someone. And they'll come back on us and, oh, I don't know what you told, you know?
Yeah, the current schedule would be, I guess it'd be something like October second to the foundation.
Especially now that you have a hard time, right? Very poorly, we weren't a hundred percent sure. We told us enough, culvert to be built now.
Uh, we're going to do it in September, but now since the culvert, culvert delivery date isn't till second week there. When we start the first week.
Okay. We'll mention that on coffee time too as well, so that people can be informed and maybe that's something that Eric can put out as a any other news deal later on as we get closer to that time period. So. Okay?
Okay. Um, I'm excited. We did get our new pay order from RDO. The invoice for that is two hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred. That's exactly what the bid was. Looking for a motion to pay for that.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve fan the invoice for RDO for the lander.
Uh, payroll.
Payroll. Payroll. Twenty, two hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred. Go call please.
Will Hone?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, and then I asked for quotes for chips for our next year, next year's Chip Seal project. And we've got two quotes, one from Strata, one from Gowin. We're looking for twenty-six hundred tons. Strata was twenty-six sixty a ton and Gowin was sixteen twenty-five a ton and that's delivered to our shop. So it'd be approximately, if we accept Gowin's quote, it'll be approximately forty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to accept Gowin's low quote of sixteen twenty-five chips for next year. So. Sorry.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the, uh, quote from Gowin for Chip Seal, sixteen twenty-five a ton. Further discussion? If not, all in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we need to put rear tires on two of our tank plow trucks for, where? And I got quotes from Service Tire. Twelve sixteen tires is eight thousand two sixty-two twenty-four. Proving labor. And the top service was eight thousand eight forty-five twelve, including that mounting labor. So I put the motion to accept the quote from Service Tire this year.
So you have on here just the back tires? The front tires are all good or?
Front tires are good.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the low bid from Service Tire for the tires on the plow trucks. Um, eighty-two sixty-two twenty-four. Further discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And then I need to look for a trailer to haul our new skid steer. I look mostly just in town. I haven't looked out of town or anything yet, but Butler has its, the tracks, it's a track unit, so they're almost seven feet wide, pretty close to seven feet wide. So it's kind of a weird size. But Butler has one out there that'll work. Uh, it's rated at sixteen thousand pounds, so it'll work. I'm going to tie me up. And they're asking twenty-one thousand for a trailer, but I haven't looked outside of town yet, so. Not sure how I should proceed there.
Would you like to see bids or is that a good price, you think, or?
That is a good price. It's a really good trailer. It's got oil bed, axles, which is not something you're going to find from, let's say, most trailers. So it'll last for twenty plus years probably.
Yes, sure.
I don't know, it would work great for that skid steer. It's a tilt deck, sixteen feet tilts and that six feet stays stationary in the front, so you can put implements or attachments or whatever on the front.
Nice.
So it's perfect for a skid steer. You can pull it with a pickup. It's got the two and the five. You got two, five, six, eight, all on it, so. We do have another trailer that we can haul this skid steer with, but it's on a pinel hedge, so it takes a truck, a truck to haul it. And it's a lot bigger trailer for a twenty-five ton trailer.
And is something you have within your budget, Kevin?
Yeah, it's like, once I get for the, uh, pay order and the new skid steer, I still have a hundred thousand dollars left in that line.
Okay.
The money is there for it.
Do we have to get bids?
Do we have to? Uh, no, no, it's under.
Hundred thousand.
It's my biggest question is, do I go out of town looking, I guess?
I like the fact that it's here in town.
Yeah. Service the steer.
Yeah.
It's yellow, which is okay for us, but.
There's, are the only ones that had one in town, though?
One part with wagon up for the track, I guess. It's an odd dimension on that track, seven feet. You don't see a lot less of the deck over there, those thorough the tires. This one is actually got fenders that stick up, but the deck itself is wider for tracks.
Commission have any wishes?
Well, if you need a budget to cover it, I would make the motion to go ahead and ask.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second to go ahead and get a trailer for the skid steer from Butler Equipment, twenty-one thousand dollars. Further discussion? If not, all in favor is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
And then the only other thing I have to add is Gowin did get their, um, bill in for, it's got graveling late, so I didn't get them in for the rest of the bills. So the graveling on Ramsey seven A west of Brockick was seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty cents. Seven C, which is east of Brock, east of Highway one of Brockick, is twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents. And Ramsey eight D, which is east of Latton, was twenty-one thousand, zero sixty-seven and twenty cents. So the total of all three of those projects is a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty cents. I'd like to have a motion to pay that rather than wait for another month, since we do have the invoices. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second to go ahead and pay Gowin for the graveling projects. And Ramsey seven A, seven C and seven A.
Eight D, sorry.
Oh, eight D.
Yeah.
Eight D. Is that west of Brockick, west?
East, east of Latton is eight D.
Okay. And that's a twenty-one thousand sixty-seven twenty.
Correct. And these, I do have all, I mean, that's funny, it's in my budget. That's, they're all within budget. And these, I do have all, I mean, that's funny, it's in my budget. That's, they're all within budget.
Okay. We have motion and a second to go ahead and approve paying Gowan construction number 117,685.20. For the graveling projects. Full call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Will Tommy?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything for Kevin? No? Highway stuff, you been in contact with Wyatt and Township on that Ramsey or that US Highway 2?
Have we, oh, I have, yes.
Yeah, I know Blaine has.
Oh, I've contacted them. Kevin Britt went for a drive with them and they, he brought in suggestions that he got from their meeting. And then Wyatt sat down with them, letting them know why some things can be done and some things can't be done. Cause some of the things that they would want to do is they wanted to take some of the turn lanes and just extend them from one turn lane to the next. He said that can't happen because the feds won't allow that, because you can't tie two turn lanes together. Um, so that was better understanding, Kevin said, for him, but Wyatt isn't looking on it. And he said that they'll have to be putting on counters, things like that to. See what traffic is on these areas that they didn't want to know. And that's where it's sitting right now.
Yes, I was down there, we were here Saturday, but I didn't notice any counters, cause wasn't actually watching for them either, so. I'm not sure if they're out there.
I actually called Wyatt last week. So that's the process that they got to.
Yeah. That would have been, it'd be good, especially around that heavy all heights area. Um, to have some sort of counters there this past weekend. But. Yes, we don't control that, so. That's up to them, so.
By the way, we get more concerns and suggestions and waiting process now.
Okay. I'm glad that's moving forward and.
And that's the way I understood it.
Yeah, that's the way I did as well. So, thank you, Kevin.
To keep you up to speed on engineering proposals, Cal J was the only company that paid proposals. We still have to go through the interview process and everything, so. Tomorrow, we're doing interviews and then we'll go from there.
All right. Thank you. Rebecca, you gonna sit in the doorway or you wanna come in?
I didn't know.
You can come in, okay.
I'll have to be in court again at nine o'clock to record, so.
So. Welcome, we'll move this up on the agenda. It is the court facilities grant process. And. With the court, Rebecca, go ahead and. Let us know what that's all about.
The court facilities grant is something that's offered through the courts in this March. It's something that every defendant who's. Found guilty or pleased guilty has a hundred dollar fine that they pay towards it. And it accumulates, and we are able to apply for grants where the court will reimburse 75% of the expense of the one-time expenses. For making improvements to the court's, the court. Facilities, which can include courthouse and, um, like jury rooms and the third floor and the court security. So the county will be responsible for 25% of any, any expenses incurred. Um, we've not applied for one in the three years that I've been here. And we haven't had, um, we've talked about a couple of things, but we've never, it's never come to fruition or gone through. This year, um, at our court security meeting, we've talked a lot about, um, the people in the courthouse and the. For security for us and the public, having a front door security officer is one option, where the grant could help pay for the. Um, renovations and the, um, metal detector things that would be required. Um, we can apply to the grant to help cover that expense. It has to be approved. The application is something that I do, if that's something the county commission decides they want to have them. We don't have to apply for the grant until December, so we have to start the process now to get into people's budgets. And so I can write the grant and then bring it to you for a final approval before it can even be submitted. Um, so one option we were thinking of is front door security, which would include the sheriff's budget mainly for a long-term budget, because we can't pay for personnel. Only for improvements to the courthouse. Another option we had considered that Roger and I had thought about a couple of times in the past was improving the jury room. Right now, it's just a big room where they congregate and everything, but we talked about adding a counter with a little, little sink. And like a coffee pot and a little fridge and stuff to make the jury room more, um, comfortable for those who have to sit there for days on end at times. So we're, we don't have any final decisions made. The expense and the. Roger and I talked about the jury room thing, the expense and the, um. Process of making what I want come to fruition is quite extensive and. We're not sure where we are with that. Are we, Roger?
No.
No. And that's okay.
It's like, yeah, a little bit talking to the plumber back then, he would have quite a time getting water to.
Into the room.
Yeah.
So we've talked about a couple of different options between Roger and I. Um. I have an old, old, from about two or three years ago, quote as to what metal detectors and things would have cost then. I have not updated it to this year's numbers yet. Two years ago would have cost around 35,000 dollars, not including the area renovations, which would not have been extensive, because we have a. Wonderful open area when we come in. Just some electrical updates would have to be included into it more than anything. About 35,000, I don't know what I said. That was two years ago number. I'm sure it's gone up since then, but I would get final numbers. You know, to show you, so you can decide if you want to have a grant or that's the area you want to go into or not. But just in general, if there's any improvements that would, could be made for the courthouse security or the third floor. Um, it would mostly come out of Roger's budget and personnel out of the sheriff's budget for the door. But the courts would, if approved, reimburse 75% of that expense. So that's just kind of a general overview.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
And I will just wait for your guys' direction and what you guys want me to start quoting, because I want you guys to be on board. I don't want to just say, hey, do this because I want it. Well, I do want to do that. But I won't.
We, we love being told what to do.
Okay, I'm gonna head back up to court if you don't have any questions.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
So if anybody has any ideas or, or what else, security enhancements, just remember that this is out there. Uh, grant applications must be in by, no later than December 31st. And it's a 75% one-time. Facility enhancement. No personnel is included in that. So. All right, now we can get, I think, back on track and other business will be the joint powers agreement with the LEC. Mr. Cummings, uh, thank you for attending this morning.
Well, good morning, everybody. So, I went through and made some changes as requested. I know the motion was to just adopt the changes as outlined at the previous meeting. I thought it was to come back in front of you, go through and give you an opportunity to look at them. In that, what I call a Christmas tree form, where it's green and red. Also, within your packet. There should be a, I believe there's a letter from Howard Swanson. To Director Clementsroot at the LEC about some of his feedback on the changes. Most significant one is that paragraph 8.44. That's the one involving deficit spending and operating loans. Mr. Swanson, in his letter, indicates that he believes, um. There's no authority under state law for political subdivisions to enter loan agreements with lenders. I just did a quick cursory search. I think there may be. It would be NDCC. 211302. And I'll just read it for you. A political subdivision may borrow against its anticipated revenue. From a bank or credit union located in this state. The bank or credit union loan and terms must be authorized by resolution of the governing body for the political subdivision. The resolution must identify the revenue tenures to repay the loan and any collateral that will secure repayment of the loan. Loan agreement must be signed on behalf of the political subdivision, the president, chairman, or equivalent. And also by a political subdivision's auditor, business manager, secretary. So where that comes into play is if we deed the property to the LEC and they're able to hold that property. They should be able to use it as collateral to secure a loan. Um, based on my interpretation. However, like I said, Mr. Swanson has some concerns. So far as I know, the LEC board has not. Met or discussed this. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Uh. I'm trying to. Think back when we met with the LEC, you know, a minute or two. But I don't know if we had. This, I think it was the night before that we approved this. And I think, uh, we had mentioned it at the LEC meeting. And, and from there, Star ordered our Christmas tree version to Mr. Swanson for his direction or his opinions on it. And this is where he came up with his letter on. What his concern with our Christmas tree version was.
It basically all was information that I.
So just so the members that you all are aware, the city's position they've adopted is. They want the LEC board to go through and sign off on things before they approve it. Their thinking is, doesn't make any sense to go through and approve this, and it's gonna go to the LEC and get shot down.
Right.
Which, I think there's some merit in that position. Mr. Swanson and I, um, have some differing opinions about section 4.2, um, which is. Maybe. On the board, the language used was duly elected. He's concerned that that wouldn't include somebody who was appointed to position if there was a vacancy.
I think it's kind of splitting hairs.
That's kind of, that's kind of what I thought, um, with all due respect to Mr. Swanson, but. I think it's just gotta go through the LEC first. If there's anything you guys think, uh, this is what we talked about.
You know, I, I think maybe satisfy. His concern, you know, the duly elected portion of it, yeah, somebody could be, uh, appointed a commissioner because of a vacancy. Um, but they're a duly sworn commission member of that party. So maybe instead of elected, have it, uh, somebody that is a duly sworn member of that commission.
I think that's an easy work, bro.
Yeah.
I can make that change. The other thing that he was concerned about, um, or his main concern, I should say.
Hi, how are you?
Committees. He and I have different interpretations on this. That would be section 4, 8, 17. Committees must consist of board members, members of the public or both. He's, he thinks that, uh. Members of law enforcement and other officials in correctional backgrounds. Would not be eligible to serve on committees. I think those people would qualify as members of the public, but. Again, it's just kind of splitting hairs. If you want me to adopt some of these changes, all of those changes. I could do that today. Without a, a third draft incorporating some of this stuff. But I, I really think this has to go through the LEC board with a discussion with their attorney present. Before we can really pull the trigger. That being said, um, indications I've been getting from the city attorney is. It looks, looks like they're mostly on board with how it's drafted. He hasn't brought up any glaring concerns to me. So that's usually good.
Well, that 4.87.
Yep.
How would you not have someone on the board?
I don't know.
Because how would you, you just bring the outside people in to do that? Would that be the best interest for?
Man, I don't, I mean, I haven't taken that good one, one person on there, so that's for the best interest of, uh, LEC, what do you think? I would tend to agree with you. I think the way I wrote it, member of the public means anybody who's not on the board. Right?
Right.
And so. And this is what lawyers do, right? They look at things and they try to see what's the other angle here, but, um. I don't think law enforcement specifically exclude, excluded from serving on there. So maybe that's a discussion that you guys gotta have with Howard, and I understand where he's coming from. That being said, he, he has significantly more experience in this particular arena with municipalities and joint powers agreements than I do. But I don't think any of the changes that we made are unreasonable, right? So. And he's got a few, you know. Grammatical changes and things like that, that's not, there's not much of that. And then as noted. Uh, he's, in his paragraph nine, does not include conveyance of real property from either Ramsey or City of the Devil's Lake. That would likely require a separate specific agreement. We've talked about that. That would be the, the deed executed at the same time. So open for comments, thoughts, suggestions?
And are we getting close to that? Deed that you think in your mind, uh, easy solution or easy done as long as the joint powers is done, or?
Correct. I think, I think they go at the same time. The drafting the deed, I mean, that'll take an hour or less, like. And it can be as easy as a quitclaim deed. Quitclaim, you give it to the LEC.
That's not right, but something like this would, you know, just a quitclaim, right?
Correct. Um, the only possible concern would be the anti-gifting provision. Can't gift property if you're a political subdivision, so. There'd have to be like a dollar or something exchanged, but. I think we could probably swing that. It should be able to be executed at the same time. It's just trying to get all those moving parts in the same direction at the same time.
So basically what I'm gathering from you is paragraph seven and. Paragraph three, we need to bring back to the LEC board, get that hashed out with, um. The other lawyer and then go from there.
I think that's accurate. I can incorporate, um, some of his other changes that he mentioned. The only other. One that I guess is worth, uh, paragraph four. Ninety days of receipt of invoice does not indicate how receipt of invoice would be. Received. He says switch to date of invoice, which I don't think that's wrong necessarily either.
Basically saying this is when it started, so this is one and a.
Yeah.
That's probably very common. I think that's with any bill that comes in the mail.
Yep, I had, I had put it to whenever we received. He wants to switch it to when they. He wants to switch it to when they sent the bill. And I, I mean, that's commonplace as well, so.
They're getting ninety days.
Right. The only concern would be is if the bill showed up on day eighty-nine for some reason. It shouldn't. Again, kind of splitting hairs. But.
I mean, if there was something like that where it came in at day eighty-ninth day, I think that's where the board would have to get involved. And be like, how can you charge these people when they got the bill on the eighty-ninth day? Now you're telling them that the bill is due on day. That's not even feasible to anybody.
Correct. So that's kind of the summary of where we're at. Next Christmas tree version. That kind of covered the discussion that we talked about. Was it too far off the mark there?
No.
Okay. So what I will do then, if I get a motion here, is I'll go through and make a draft three today. I'll circulate it and then we can discuss it at the next LEC board meeting.
I'll have to approve to start a draft three with the changes needed.
Certainly.
That cover your needs?
I think so. Maybe just get a roll call.
Okay. Move in second as I would go ahead and allow State's Attorney Cummings to draft an updated version of the joint powers agreement for the LEC. Roll call please.
Otis?
Hi.
Will Homie?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Gessner?
Hi.
Brett?
Hi.
Motion carries. Okay. New business. Approve the homestead credit. Second. We have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve the homestead credit. All those in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, joint powers agreement nine-one-one. We'll put Association of Townies deed collection. This is something newer. I take it. I don't know if those had an opportunity to take a look at this and how soon it needs to be voted on.
And if not had an opportunity to look at this.
Something that came out last Friday.
They're trying to, is it surcharge basically?
Right. Well, and it looks like they're looking to collect all the fees and then distributing them to the counties. Is that the way I'm reading it right?
That's right. Me too. You know, like a two different fees, right? Like a thirty-five cent fee and then some other fee and then it goes, they collect it, come back to the county. And the county distributes it to. I understand. I don't know. It's, it's quite different than the way that it's done now.
And this guy's name was Siren, I don't know what it's.
Yes. So that's going to make the nine-one-one even less old.
Exactly.
I mean, Siren's taking fifty cents and then statewide nine-one-one is taking ten cents and they're taking ten cents to provide service. You're talking about buck thirty for nine-one-one. That's what I was going to say, a buck thirty, whatever. It drops it from what it was, right? But are you understanding?
I think one of the things that the Association of Townies is doing is hey, is gathering all that information from cell phones that are residing in the state that don't necessarily have a seven-on-one vehicle. Because with that, the ability to move around and be transient, you don't, so.
Even across the state.
Even across the state, you know? So I think this is a way to potentially collect more fees, but it's still a reduction, I think, in, you know, the overall. And some goes to, I think, NDACO just for their collection process.
I don't see any specific deadline on here. Maybe this is if you have things to bring up at the LEC meeting as well. And take the temperature of the other commissioners on there. Maybe we table it and tell that.
Is this something that they're going to talk about this morning?
Well, we could bring it up at our September meeting with the region. The caucus meeting too. Isn't that coming up next week? The thirteenth. I don't know if people got that email.
They haven't.
They haven't, they haven't set the date or the time.
Not, not concrete, no. I've been checking my email to see it.
So the conference is coming up the first weekend in October, I think, isn't it? So second weekend in October. So does that mean we don't have to switch out our meeting dates in October? Nice. Okay. But anyway, they're having a region three caucus meeting that they're trying to organize. And that's something that we could bring up around with the other counties within our region and the Association of Townies. But it's certainly something that we could have a discussion with, with the LEC and with their, and you know, their regional dispatch for the counties within our area. So.
The table might be at the caucus meeting too. So how is that good for trying?
Well, I think with the ability of having teams, I think somebody would probably be there, whether it's in person or two teams. I think is what Aaron had indicated in his email, but let's see, our next meeting is, is it the twentieth? Nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth is the next commission meeting. Maybe give us an opportunity to investigate this, have our state's attorney look into a little bit of it. Make sure that we're not doing anything that's, we shouldn't be doing as far as a county is concerned. Just by signing off on the deal. Need to get things on a Friday afternoon and then approve them right away the next morning. So without having an opportunity for our legal representative to help with the investigate. We could table this until the September twentieth or nineteenth, I'm sorry. At work?
And like I said, if we could bring it up at the next LEC board meeting, it would kind of appeal to everybody else.
Well, unfortunately, the LEC's next scheduled meeting is the twentieth.
Oh, indeed.
A day after, the day after our next meeting. But it may be something that, and you know, I know I forwarded this onto Star and her comments were that this is the first time she was seeing this. It appears the state wants to collect all the fees and then distribute them to the counties. Instead of how it currently works, right now we collect the fees and then pay the portion of the state. So little different collection process it looks like.
I can take a look.
All of the state has other money, but it's kind of like very down the road. Or didn't fill the market.
Can get some clarification, can ask Aaron some questions too. And see what exactly this is and.
Maybe feel up with his thoughts, sorry.
Yeah. Anybody else, anything else on that? On the nine-one-one? Joint Powers Collection Fee. Or Fee Collection. Now we'll move on to floodplain administration FEMA letter. This is going to drive Chris and I crazy. Just a little bit. So this stems back from last December when we got that initial letter. And then in April when we had Aaron and, and can't think of the other gentleman's name at the time. Tyler Spooner from the state, joined our meeting, gave us a little update. We sent FEMA some updates then, following that. They would like, we've been, you know, looking at what we had come up with at that time was that Model C ordinance. And so we had a discussion, Chris and I, with this Mr. Barney or Barney or about this Model C ordinance. And so, and they're wanting townships to either sign off on something stating that, yes, we're going to allow Ramsey County to do it. They're no, we're going to do our own kind of thing. So I wanted to keep this on our radar. Then we're supposed to respond to this within fourteen days. We received it, what, the eighteenth or twentieth of August. Chris had asked for an extension. We got a sixty-day extension. I don't want to wait sixty days for this. So if we could keep this front and center and on our radar and whether we need to reach out to the townships and either have them sign off on something stating that similar to what these documents that were included in our packet, all state as far as that were signed back in the, it looked like the early early nineties, some of only in the eighties. And that regarded more towards planning and zoning for the county and not specifically towards floodplain administration. Now, when the Model C ordinance was, was passed back in, oh, late two thousand, floodplain administrator indicated that he verbally, verbally discussed this with township supervisors. And nothing written was documented as far as yes, no, otherwise that we can find or we can, not always twenty-three years ago. So people's memories are fuzzy and other things. But Chris, you have any thoughts or discussions that you'd like to share on this?
Meeting with Creole Township sometime this week, depending on certain individuals' schedule. Spoke with Pelican on the first week go around and what they kind of want. Want to know how it is, is the township taking care of it? That's at least verbalized anyway for both of those two. I reached out to a few others and just waiting on responses.
So. And I guess we need to be all on the same page with townships and counties. So hey, according to this letter that we received, it appeared that there's some conflict being stated from participating townships, conflicted with the information that we had provided them. And so the big thing I don't think we want to do is fall into non-compliance with the FEMA and jam up people's existing flood insurance that they currently have. Although I think that, I don't think there's anybody that's below the threshold of being flooded unless the rains start today and don't stop. And we see something of the biblical nature of Noah and forty days, forty nights of non-stop. But stranger things have happened. So we'll stay on top of this. We don't want to jam up any of our citizens by not being able to get flood insurance or those that have flood insurance not be eligible to receive benefits if it was done in some sort of fashion that way. So one of the, the comments within here that was for those township, for, for information from Ramsey County officials, if county is not managing floodplain development for these townships and any others, any policies inadvertently written with the county community code may be invalid. So that's something that we don't want to see happen to any of our individuals. And I think we have some tools in our, our toolbox. And we will next spring, especially with pictometry coming on board and doing that flyover. We'll be able to find those structures that may not have come in for approval and may not have sought that approval, whether it be from their township, from the county, or who have you. And, you know, we may have to come up with a policy on violators. If, if somebody has violated and below a base flood elevation, we, I don't think we have anybody that's, that would be below that based on those two thousand or nineteen ninety-nine firm maps. That seems to be the best that FEMA can do. And they weren't necessarily overly accurate at that particular time. But there's better tools out there and they should be using those. And we certainly will be coming next spring. But I don't know if they want to wait that long for any of this to become finalized. So Chris and I will work with that and maybe Bo and Ethan direct us and make sure that we're staying within the legal bounds of the, of what's best for the county and the citizens of Ramsey County.
So just, just to bring it to a point here then, basically FEMA wants to know who's managing it there. And some of the townships have said, nope, we want to manage our own. Some of the townships have said, nope, we want you to do it for us. Problem is, we're trying to find those documents and discussions from thirty, forty years ago. And I think at the time when some of the flooding was happening. And I think at the time when some of the flooding was happening, it's a lot of handshake kind of deals like, hey, we'll do this. So I think Chris has been really digging into it. I think we're moving in the right direction. We're certainly not going to wait until. Day fifty-nine to start trying to dig up stuff.
I heard. Tell them it would be a good idea to start. Not necessarily scratch, but formulate some kind of document and let township prove it. No, I mean officially specifically stating floodplain management. I know Creole Township and that. I mean, that's kind of where. Where I was on that board, but they signed it. They thought it was the floodplain way. It's the daily get control. It's kind of through all the zoning. Candy was specific. Document with specific intentions. And they all need to sign it on. So it's updated.
Right. And I think based on the resolutions that we, that Candy was able to find and we got included. I think that's something that we could, you know, have rewritten to include the, the appropriate. Century code regarding floodplain administration. And you have the townships either yea or nay on it and. You know, if they all say yea, then Mr. Jager's job just got. More intensified or if they come back and say, no, we want to do our own. That's fine too. But you know, ultimately the townships, you know, have the first say in the deal and you know. And I think that's where that Model C came, came into play that they should have had something that. You know, the townships signed up on with that saying, we, yes, we adopt the Model C that we agree with what Ramsey County has stated in this document. And we willing to participate. And it all kind of stemmed from that, those elevation requirements, I think. That, and you know, the base flood elevation is fourteen sixty. Ramsey County at that particular time did not want to participate in that. I think Creole Township decided to go ahead with that. And you know, sixty, I think the argument was at the particular time was it would inhibit development around the lake. Would have set an un, you know, godly elevation of, of fourteen sixty and we have a lot of developments around the lake that are below that. But I think what they're, we're trying to prevent at the particular time was. To having more claims come in for damaged homes. You know, building below that certain elevation where they could potentially flood. So. And if. I don't know. Chris, you have anything else you want to add or comments you want to put?
Does the current ordinance spell out what vertical data you're in, what's your video?
I'm sorry, what?
Does the current ordinance spell out what vertical data you're surveying? I think that we're using the late one of AD eighty-two nine for a while. But all the current surveys are in eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
Which is like one point two feet different. So the new map, if you're on ID, I would highlight our viewer, if you want to build above fourteen sixty, it actually has to be above fourteen sixty-one point two.
Should find out what FEMA is using.
Hopefully everybody's switched over now.
Right.
Well. They haven't relooked at our area yet. That's the problem. They're going to do the kickoff for remapping for firm stuff.
They still have the city state and all that? Geez, okay. Get him surprised, but.
As per the information I have anyway.
Yeah.
So we will continue moving forward with that. I wanted to keep it on our agenda so it stays on everybody's mind. So. We can continue and get that hammered out and, and stay within compliance with FEMA and the state as far as. And floodplain administration goes.
And people are curious where they're at. People that actually like my art, I have new contours from twenty twenty-one, fresh one from twenty twenty-one, then we flew everything in the basin. And I also have six inch aerial quotas about a few years in there. So he can see the new structures that have been from it or whatever pretty quickly.
Yeah.
A shepherd.
So. Any other thoughts or suggestions on which direction we go with that or? Anybody? Do you by all means let us know.
I think Steve has a little empathy or not too.
The updated contours, yeah, he should. And so that's something that he could isolate pretty easily too. If you take a look at those old firm maps and make sure that. You know, if there are somebody that's. Could be in violation of what even those said. And you know, because I think that Model C, the way it was written was FEMA put a base flood elevation higher than one foot, you know, foot elevation increase. Based on that. And then the county, I think they added another foot to that. So it could potentially have been two feet higher than that base flood elevation. And you know, I, so I'm thinking somewhere in that neighborhood of fifty-two would probably be our lowest elevation for a building. If I'm remembering right. And those old digital maps are difficult to read. But they're still out there. And those were dated two thousand, Chris, or ninety-nine?
Ninety-nine, two thousand.
Ninety-nine, yeah. Some of them were done in ninety-nine, some were done in two thousand. So. But we're the only area of the state that hasn't been updated. By that. So not sure exactly why, but we'll. Continue working towards that. So. Sheriff Lang, thank you for joining us today. Anything that you have to add?
Well, full staff, everybody's done one of their schooling license. So. Put it on the road. One of our cars is being outfitted now. So we should have that back next Tuesday. They're probably down. So.
Okay. Portfolio reports? Yeah, nothing? Nothing? Lang?
Pretty unimpressive.
All right. Law enforcement center continued to move forward. Had some discussions about NEXOL. Which went away all of a sudden last week and understood that there were some. People that were not happy or unaware of that situation and switching to a new system that. Yeah. So hey, it's. And so it's something that the public will have to go in and re-sign up to be notified for impending emergencies. You know, weather threats, different things like that, that they were getting from. The NEXOL service. Everybody from the county will have to get reestablished on that. That's what we used for building closures or building emergencies here. Was the NEXOL system. Is, and Central Square going any better, Sheriff?
Once we get, getting through some of the glitches, the only issue we've been having is the GPS tracking portion. We're still fighting a lag time. Well, Chris and I think we may have stumbled across something that's going to lock into the VPN. For some reason it's drawn and everything weighed out. So I think that might be giving us a lag. So we will work on our first step and see if they can correct the problem. They said they, they've had these issues before. It's a program issue. So I will have to hear about it.
I will have to hear about it.
So we'll have to touch base with him again. So. Other than that, there's just a few little glitches and every computer is set up just a little bit different. So we've got to work through it. They, I think they got mine running at about ninety-nine percent and that's just the lag in the GPS. It could be forty-five minutes early, it could be ten minutes behind. So to us, it's not acceptable. We want to get to that ten second delay. They were guaranteeing this five, but even the ones that are actually working pretty decent, they get to ten to seven second lag. So. We'd settle for that.
Testing's proven really long, really, really long times.
So the way the communication thing is going to work with this is probably less radio traffic. So we rely on the CAD. So if somebody puts out a distress, you look at the CAD to see where they're at. Well, if we've got these big legs, we'll be just running to a go spot.
That's not good.
No.
Oh.
So I've, I've instructed our department will continue radio communications until problem solved.
I did ask for a. For the original proposal. For Central Square to see what they're, or if they included some of that onsite information or onsite assistance. Because I know how much we like to handle things on our own. Sometimes that's not humanly possible. No matter how smart we think we are. So and so i- if there's a cost involved with it, and if that's something that we need to, to do, to make sure that that's up and running. And we're a hundred percent satisfied with it. That's something that we need to do.
And even the training portion of it, you can, we couldn't get everybody there to Zoom meetings when they out and get them trained. So they're relying on. Some of us that were able to get to them. And we're still trying to figure the system out. You know, we, we get through it, but we're not really efficient with it. It could be the more we use it, we will. But. So I got new guys that have been in academy now. They're trying to catch up to where we're at and we're just trying to figure it out. So.
So what's the process like to get switched on with the NEXOL to the new system, you call there?
Currently not. Operational.
What's the new system called again?
Uh, plays old.
I can't remember.
It is called Hyperreach.
Hyperreach.
It's the last night when the storms and stuff rolled through, there was no notifications or anything going on. I didn't receive any of that. I was used to receive them all the time.
Another part two is something we have to at least talk to the LEC about is. We would actually get a physical phone call from dispatcher saying, hey, just give you heads up. You didn't actually get a physical notification. They called you and said they were in a winter, you know, severe thunderstorm warning. Didn't have a loss.
And I believe the way this system is, it's just a text. Ready?
Did you get one?
No, I didn't get one.
Oh, you've gone to Hyperreach?
Run to Hyperreach.
As far as I know, yes. So we won't get that phone call.
Well, and, and some of the problems that were discussed with that was that it was. Isolating a certain group of people for reverse nine one one. Is that how NEXOL was set up to work? And it was a. A time consuming deal for dispatchers to do something like that based on who was being needed to be paged or?
Some of it was that, you know, like some of the fire guys, I'm not picking on the fire guys, not in Devil's Lake, but certain fire departments would get a page. And the dispatcher would set off the local siren in their town and then start calling. Well, that's inefficient. That's just horrible. So that part, we do need to streamline or the LEC needs to streamline that. And I think that's what this is kind of going forward. But the voice calls is just, you know, all these new smartphones, they have limited availability on location. Single beep or whatever, but. Sheriff Famer working. You can. Take CAD's number and make a specific notification for it, but. It still would be nice to get that phone call to be exactly the same thing. At that text message read. So it was kind of a multifaceted answer. Streamline dispatching, but we're just missing all of the voice. Dispatch like.
Well, and from my understanding that. So that's the, the notification process for some of the rural volunteer services is they're limited to this. And so that's a extra step, extra process for dispatch to isolate that. Hey, instead of having a pager or a radio for that individual, which. You know, also comes with another set of costs.
And it's tough to buy in now on any of those pages or radios because siren. It always keeps getting pushed back, but it's going to happen.
Yeah. To stay in compliance or, or stay with compliance of the equipment in order for to meet the siren obligations. And if anybody's watching that has an interest in being a dispatcher, there are still people short over there. So. Any of your. Yeah. Looking to help out the community, that would be one way to do it. And it's, you know, they pay well and it's good benefit. So. But it's different shifts. It's a twelve hour shift that. May or may not fit some people's schedules, but. Other than that, that's about all I had. Airport, I don't know if anybody saw the numbers from July, but we set a record. Boardings for the month of July despite the construction going on out there with the terminal. So. And it wasn't just a record for. July, it was a record for all months boarding. It was over a thousand people. In and out of Devil's Lake on commercial air flights. So, which is a really, really good thing. Now, I haven't seen August's numbers yet, but I'm thinking that those numbers were equally as good. And the construction on the new terminal is continuing to be on pace. So. That's all I have for. Stuff. We're keeping Bo busy. Candy's staying busy. Audit stuff. Bo's got a bunch of jury trials coming up.
Yeah, September and October are hairy, but.
Yeah, September and October are hairy, but. Dedicated to making it a stick place to live and work, so that's what we got to do.
And you have, you and Chris have any time today or tomorrow to get together, talk about this floodplain stuff?
Uh, yes, we briefly talked on Friday, but all coordinated with Chris.
Talk today? Find, find time today or tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay, let me know when I'll be a part of that. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? If not. Eating a drink.